Okay, the next three speakers are Edwin Velez, Lourdes Escobar, and Maria Velez. Edwin Velez.
Buenas tardes, señores y damas de esta junta de rentas. Ante de nada, yo estoy aquí para expresar el sentimiento de todos y cada uno de los que estamos aquí. Y van ustedes a seguir escuchando lo mismo. Porque no es justo de que los ricos estén en la torta y nosotros no estemos en ella. La justicia no es 1% para los ricos y los allegados a ellos, ¿y nosotros? Nosotros qué hay. Nosotros también estamos en la torta. Así que las decisiones de ustedes.
Good evening. First of all, I'm here to express what everyone here is expressing and has been expressing and feeling. It's... And you'll keep hearing it. This is... It's not fair that the wealthy, that wealth is getting all the cake and we don't have a chance to get any. It's not... We can't. It's not right for certain people to own everything and for the rest of us to not have access and to not have a chance to enjoy anything.
Yo no sé qué más ustedes quieran oír porque son 2 minutos que tengo que seguir hablando. Pero sí quiero dejar una cosa bien clara: de que es mejor morir de pie que vivir arrodillados. Y si no lo entienden en español, el señor se los puede explicar en inglés.
So in my two minutes, I don't know what else to tell you, but I will tell you that it's better to die on your feet than to live on your knees.
Bueno, me quedan unos cuantos segundos más para seguir hablando. Pero yo no quiero que las palabras se queden en el aire. Yo lo que quiero son hechos. Así que allá hay más damas que varones. Esto pareció un minuto de silencio, ¿no? Pero aquí no se ha muerto nadie. La vivienda de quienes está muriendo y los jurados están callados. El que calle otorga. Entonces, ¿qué es lo que quieren? Renta congelada. Necesitamos equilibrio de poderes. No que los ricos nos opriman, nos traten como sus hijos y nosotros sigamos agachando la oreja a ellos.
Thank you.
Ya se acabó de injusticias.
So, there's been a lot said, there are a lot of words, but I don't want words to just go into air. I want facts, I want actions. Sometimes it seems like there's a minute of silence in here. It's very quiet, but we're not at a wake yet, nobody has died. And when you're quiet, if anyone's quiet, like when you're quiet, it can be taken as you yielding, as you giving way. But what we're here asking for is a rent freeze. And it's not... So freeze the rent, and it's about having a more balanced distribution of power and not for the rich to be able to oppress us and to put us out.
Thank you. Lourdes Escobar.
Renta congelada, por favor. Okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es María de Lourdes, vivo en Quincy, en calle Itaca, número 4023 de Elmhurst. Mi situación es muy, muy, muy crítica. No solo yo, no voy a hablar solo por mí sino por muchísima gente mayor como yo, que tengo 67 años y tengo que pagar una renta de 1500 dólares mensuales yo sola. Sí, ¿y qué hacen ustedes? Bien vestiditos, ustedes bien comiditos, y ustedes su carro del año, mientras nosotros también, los pobres, pagamos taxes. También nosotros, los pobres, lloramos. También nosotros, los pobres, hacemos lo que ustedes nuestras necesidades.
Just a moment, let's get the interpretation.
Entonces les pido de favor, tengan compasión de nosotros, los pobres. Llegamos a este país, no hay requecirnos, no hacernos ricos. A salir adelante, a sacar nuestras familias. ¿Y qué ha pasado? Sí, que todos los dueños, en mi caso, mi apartamento no tiene ni ventanas. Oh, perdón.
No sé, lo comprendo. So, rent freeze, please. I live at 4023 Tucker in Elmhurst. I'm 67 years old. And I live alone, and I have to pay 1500 dollars rent every month by myself. You're over there, you're well dressed, you're well fed, you possibly have new cars. Think of the poor people. Think, have compassion for us and the difficulties that we face. There's...
Disculpe, no se me olvidó el último que dijo, la última parte.
La última... O sea, que yo estoy diciendo que mi apartamento no tiene ventanas. No tiene ventanas, yo vivo como en un huacal, como en una jaula. No, pero la jaula tiene rayas, si me pueden ver ahí. En mi apartamento no. Sí, aparte de que paso, yo vivía en un shelter. No quiero hablar de esto porque yo sufro de depresión por ese motivo. Yo viví en un shelter seis años en la calle. Como Dios me dio a entender, tengo ese apartamentito, estudio, jacal, como le quieran llamar. Sí, y veo aquí, ciertamente todos somos inmigrantes y yo creo que ustedes también. Unos de ustedes son inmigrantes, ¿y qué quiere decir? Que unos tienen derecho y otros no? No. Entonces, por favor, ya vean, ya vean, no escuchen nada más y lo dejen en cajas cerradas.
Excuse me, we need to get the interpretation, please.
So, I live in an apartment, it's a studio, it has no windows. You could call it an apartment or you could call it a box. It's not a cage because a cage has bars and the light goes in. So, it's a box. I'm there. I was in the shelter system and I lived on the street for six years. And somehow, God helped me to end up getting an apartment and getting this place I have now. But it's something that I need to be able to keep. You know, what is it? Is it that, you know, some of you are immigrants too, some of us are immigrants? Is it that people from this country can have access to certain things and immigrants cannot? We're not doing that. Oh, one thing I forgot about earlier, sorry, that I did lose from the first part. Is the fact that immigrants don't come here to get rich, they come here to get by. They come here to work and they work and they pay taxes and they contribute. And later on, this is how it ends up looking for them.
Bueno, por favor, yo sé que no hay mucho tiempo, yo soy una señora sola, como muchas señoras de la tercera edad. Por favor, no, no, no dejen esto a un lado. Ayúdenos, por favor, o... Mire, a mi compañ... Que me representa el señor César. Esa caja tal vez para mí es para mañana. Yo siento que me voy a morir ya de la situación que yo estoy viviendo. Es horrible. Ahora, el dueño de casa, los dueños no permiten. Yo renté un cuarto y ahorita el tipo que está viviendo ahí está viviendo gratis. Porque yo quise buscar mi ayuda, porque debo el mes de renta, yo no he pagado ahora mi renta. Tengo miedo volver a vivir en la calle.
Excuse me, your time is up. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Por favor, ese cero que está en esos globos, que yo soy de México así se le dicen, tomenlo en cuenta. Ahí tiene un cero. Todo eso tienen que ver ustedes, por favor.
Right, so don't throw this aside, don't discount this. Right now, it's a horrible situation. I had to rent a room because I needed the income to make rent. I'm already one month behind in rent. I'm afraid to lose my home and end up back in the shelters or in the street. As the coffin that's here, that might be for me. So, please, look at the balloons, there's a big zero painted on them. And please take that into account, take that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Velez.
Good evening. Buenas noches, mi nombre es María Velez y vengo de... Representando Catholic Immigration. Vivo en el 3409 El 83 Street y los dueños son... Ah, vivo por 22 años y los dueños son ANE Real Estate Management. Y quiero, por favor, que congelen la renta y dejen el 0%. En el caso mío, mi experiencia, yo soy una mujer incapacitada. Solo mi esposo trabaja. Mi hijo está en la universidad y tiene un trabajo en un medio tiempo y no nos alcanza para pagar.
Excuse me, let's get some interpretation, please. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is María Velez. I live at 3409 83rd Street. And I've been there for 22 years. My landlord is ANE Real Estate Management. And formerly it was Vantage Management. I am currently a disabled woman. My husband is employed. And my son is currently in college and working part-time, but he's not enough, he's not able to help pay enough bills.
El dinero no nos alcanza, a veces no tenemos, no nos alcanza para comer. No sabemos si comer o pagar la renta. Entonces estamos en una situación crítica ya. A veces tengo que hacer préstamos para ayudar a mi hijo a la universidad. Y también tenemos acoso del landlord porque él... Le pedimos que nos haga los arreglos y le suplicamos y nunca nos escucha. Nos ponen neveras viejas para que nos aburramos y nos vamos, y que no fuéramos del edificio. Porque ellos están rentando a nuevas personas. Les entregan los apartamentos con pisos nuevos.
So, we don't have enough income to make rent and all the bills. Sometimes it does come down to a choice of whether you pay rent or you eat. There's my son who's in college. We try to help him, but we don't have enough money to help him with college either. So, we have to look for loans for that. And meanwhile, we face harassment. We ask from the landlords. We ask for repairs and instead of that, they give us old fridges and they make bad repairs or they make no repairs, hoping that we'll get sick of it, we'll get bored and we'll just go. Meanwhile, for new tenants coming in, they've renovated whole apartments, they put in new floors and new fixtures.
Entonces eso lo hace para que uno se aburra y se vaya del apartamento para ellos aumentar la renta. A las nuevas personas que llegan, les entregan los apartamentos con pisos de mármol, lavadora de platos, todo muy bueno los apartamentos. Y nosotros estamos por... Yo por 22 años ahí y no nos quieren hacer los arreglos, los pisos malos, todo. Entonces no es justo el trato que nos están dando. Todos tienen que ser iguales. Y por favor, les pido que dejen la renta congelada y nos dejen el 0% porque no sabemos si comer o pagar renta. Gracias.
Thank you very much.
So, any hope of getting repairs, anything, they just wait for us to get bored maybe or to get tired of it, get discouraged. And hopefully, they hope that we'll leave that way. Then they can rent the apartments, they can renovate them and rent to new people for more money. In the new apartments, if you see them, they have marble floors, they have dishwashers installed. And it's not fair that we get different treatment while our apartments are falling apart or neglected. So it's, you know, it's unequal treatment that we get from the newer tenants. So I'm asking you to please freeze the rent and please stake with 0%.
Thank you. The next speakers are Lilian Liam, Ana Hilario, and Ivan Victorio. Lilian Liam. Good evening, thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name is Lilian Liam and I live in 4130 46th Street in Sunnyside.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
My name is Lilian Liam, I live on 4130 46th Street in Sunnyside since 1979. I live in a studio with my sister. My lease is going to be up in the... Be going up the end of July. But up to this moment, we haven't got the new lease. And we both are retired, so we live on a fixed income. We are concerned what the next rent will look like because we cannot afford an increase. We hardly can make our ends meet. So I'm asking you if you could freeze the rent for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ana Hilario. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming. My name is Ana Hilario. I live at 150-1188 Jamaica, New York. And my landlord is Sara Corporation. Sara Corporation, please hear it, okay? I live in this apartment for over 20 years. I was single and then I got married and my two daughters, they were born in this apartment. So I'm gonna tell you about my family. I have two daughters, one is 16 and the other one is 10 years old. And it is very hard to provide for them. And we are a working family. My husband, he has two jobs. He wakes up every morning at 3:30 a.m. and he comes back around this time. Now he just texts me, he's home, okay? He works all those long hours. I work as a teacher assistant for the Department of Education. And it's not enough, you know, three jobs. It's not enough for us to get to pay this rent. And we have all those fees. AC, key, 200 dollars for a key for my daughter. So she's not safe because she has no key. And she is a high school student. That's not fair. She needs to get her key. I asked them and he said, "I need to pay 200 dollars for one key." Every month, every month. It's a lot of frustration in my family. Two years ago, Sara Corporation took over our building. This didn't happen before. I'm here today because two years, you know, we're suffering in our home. Anxiety, frustration. We don't know what is gonna happen every time we see. I know my time is over, so I hope you heard and I hope you start initiating an investigation about Sara Corporation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ivan Victorio.
Señores de la Junta de Viviendas, buenas noches. Ya escuchamos todos los testimonios de las personas que me antecedieron y todos coincidimos en lo mismo. Cero renta, renta estabilizada, perdón, y 0% de interés.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we've heard all the testimony so far that preceded mine. And we've heard them in unison saying stabilized rent and 0% increase.
Vemos muchas personas que están afectadas psicológicamente y eso es por el incremento de la renta. Crean nuevas cosas, MCI y un montón de cosas. Entonces sabemos que el costo de vida está alto. Más al incremento de la renta, imagínense dónde vamos a vivir. Hay mucha gente que escucharon que están deshabilitadas, sus esposas están enfermos o esposos, hijas estudiando. El caso mío, mi esposa está muy delicada de salud. Entonces tengo que afrontar esa situación. Ustedes son los sindicados para darnos esa estabilidad emocional que nosotros merecemos.
We've seen a lot of people who are affected psychologically by their situations. We know that they come up with new things like MCIs all the time and things and etc. And we know the cost of living is high already. And then if the rent is gonna keep increasing, how are we gonna get through it? We've heard from a lot of people here who are disabled, a lot of people who are retired, people with health issues, with family members, with children. And it's up to you to give us the support that we need, to give us the help that we need and freeze the rents.
No esperemos, señores, cuando haya elecciones, nos mandan folletos, panfletos a la casa. Yo no sé cómo se... Conocen nuestro número de teléfono, nuestra dirección y nos envían. ¿Por qué no nos envían eso diciendo, señores, vamos a congelar la renta y vamos...? Exacto, a cambiar la ley. Vuelvo a repetir, señor, ustedes son los que nos pueden ayudar. Y pido una vez más, señores, nosotros no pararemos. Porque el pueblo unido jamás será vencido y seguiremos hasta las últimas consecuencias. Gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you.
So, let's not wait till election yet to hear from the city. I know that when that time is coming up, somehow they get our mailing addresses, our phone numbers, and we get leaflets, we get pamphlets. We need to hear from you all now, from the city now. There's... We need you to... And we know that you can help us. We need you to freeze the rent. And we won't stop and we won't be split up because as you know, united people cannot be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Konstantin Tejeda, Rosalie Sims, and Lorena Lopez.
Sí, muy buenas noches, mi nombre es Konstantino Tejeda, organizador de inquilino de Woodside on the Move. Yeah, good evening.
Good evening, my name is Konstantino Tejeda. I'm a tenant organizing with Woodside on the Move.
Sin lugar a duda, con el desfile de todos los testimonios que han pasado esta noche por acá, cualquier situación que yo pueda agregar no sería significante. Pero sí quisiera hacer algunos señalamientos de rigor en esta noche.
So, there's no doubt that after hearing all the testimonies that have come before us tonight, I can't really add anything significant, new, substantial. But there is one thing that I can say.
El contraste es el siguiente, ¿no? Y es sencillo para dar un rostro humano a la situación imperante. De un lado tenemos locaceros, gente utilizando cualquier subterfugio a los fines de incrementar la renta a como le dé lugar a costilla de los pobres inquilinos.
On the one hand, we have the landlords trying to avail themselves of any subterfuge, any trick that they can to increase rents and increase their income on the backs of tenants.
Y se sienten tan poderosos los caseros que ellos no están aquí esta noche. O sea, que se levanten los caseros si hay alguno aquí hoy. Obvio, o sea, es un mensaje que ellos se sienten cómodos, aparentemente, con la directiva porque están seguros de que las decisiones que puedan emanar de ustedes lo va a favorecer a ellos, ¿no?
And evidently, if we look around the room, the landlords are not here. Let's see them stand if they are. They are not here and that shows that they trust you. That shows that they're comfortable enough, not needing to be here, not needing to send anyone because they're relying on you to make a decision that favors them.
Entonces, distinguida directiva, sin lugar a duda ustedes tienen un momento crucial histórico en sus manos para tomar una decisión que puede trazar y que puede definir si uno de nuestros hermanos acá pueden dormir en un charter o debajo de un puente más adelante. Exacto, en el ataúd.
So, to the board, I say you're holding, you're in a historic moment, you have a historic opportunity right now to make the right decision for us, a decision that can decide whether somebody has to sleep in a shelter or possibly under a bridge or in a coffin.
Es más que sobreentendido que más de 50 inquilinos abocando por ellos mismos, defendiéndose ellos mismos para que no se registre un aumento más. Para mí eso es algo crucial, significante, que tiene que ser la premisa bajo la cual ustedes deberían de tomar su decisión.
It's beyond stating that to have more than 50 tenants advocating for themselves, stating their cases, presenting their positions, it should be more than enough premise for you to be able to make the right decision.
Thank you.
Sí, bien rapidito. Tengo la certeza de que en cualquier rinconcito de su corazón todavía hay alguna chispita de justicia. Lo que se ha registrado hoy aquí es para que ustedes lo tomen en cuenta. Y si quieren también dormir tranquilo, que su conciencia no le martille constantemente, sintonicen su decisión con lo que se ha registrado esta noche aquí.
Thank you for your testimony.
I am sure that somewhere in your hearts, there's still a little piece of justice left. And I want you to, I hope that you will think of the people who've come here to state their case and to come to the right decision for their benefit.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias, y 0%.
Thank you very much and we need 0%.
Rosalie Sims.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for having this forum for us to speak. I live in Jamaica since 1982. I moved right here on 163rd Street. Have the same landlord and go through the same crisis as my neighbors from around here and other neighborhoods could speak. When the new tenant moved out, the whole apartment is being rehabbed and rent stabilization goes out the door. You have the power and the know-how to do something. So I'm asking you to do something because all of us are here, share something in common. Your paycheck is not enough, the rent supersedes this paycheck. So when you, if you're a bi-weekly person and you get your first paycheck the beginning of the month, you decided if you're gonna put something to eat in your home, something to drink in your refrigerator, or wait for the next paycheck and stay without. Everything is going up, the paycheck is not catching up. I've seen six family members to a one-bedroom apartment because they can't do any better. This is called survival. And we are living next door to nowhere. Because yours is a step away from homelessness. As a single mother, I fight that battle every day with two children, one who have special needs. And if I wasn't a strong person, I don't know what I would have done. But not everybody could do that. Some people in my neighborhood have language barrier. Landlords use that to... Landlords use that to their advantage, I can tell you that. Because I speak language and I'm English and I'm from the Caribbean, I have seen the advantage. And even some of the same Latino super take advantage of their own people. And you has the right to do that. Give the landlord the opportunity, he pays his super to do his job, the dirty work, to the tenants. Because 2017, I didn't have guests, but my rent went up. I lived from October 10 until, and you know what I had to do? Hold my rent and just say, "Take me to court because you're gonna pay me, you're gonna do something, rent adjustment." They didn't do it. It didn't get solved until this year because I was determined. Someone from another country who don't speak this language, what would they have done? Give in. But I didn't give in. I fought with everything I got and I wound up with $400 back. I'm speaking because some of these individuals are single women, come from other countries like my mom did, and worked hard to bring five children to this country.
Thank you, excuse me, your, your time is...
And live to see she has grandchildren who serve this country. We may be poor, but please, we're asking you, think about us because there's no level field for playing. Because MCI is not a level field. Nobody checks on the landlord to see if the work he's saying done, until I read an article that some of it is estimated work, not real work. We need more of this in our community and in other language beside English.
Thank you. Lorena Lopez.
Thank you to the lady who just spoke, it was just right on point. Good evening, members of the RGB and everyone present. My name is Lorena Lopez and I'm a tenant organizer with Catholic Migration Services. Every testimony and story you heard tonight reflects how huge of a housing crisis we have and how we keep losing affordable housing every single day. This is why we mourn, because we can handle another rent increase. Tenants struggle every day to make ends meet, to pay the rents and cover other important expenses. Meanwhile, landlords use current loopholes to squeeze out profits and come up with new tactics to harass tenants out of their apartments. Affordable housing is being killed by landlords' aggressive use of major capital improvements. Just last year, landlords were granted over $185 million in MCIs through the city. 185 millones de dólares en MCIs para los dueños el año pasado. That doesn't sound right when tenants don't get repairs done, when they're taking people to court for frivolous cases, when landlords' profits keep increasing year after year. We're here to call on you to do the right thing. Don't add to the killing of affordable housing, don't add to the increase of homeless, homelessness. We need a rent freeze. 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 Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, the next speakers are Amanda C., I don't have a last name, and Francisco de la Cruz. Good evening.
Good evening. So, um, my name is Amy, not Amanda, as I wrote down on the list, and I'm a tenant organizer with Catholic Migration Services. All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, I would like to open this up with a snippet from a New York Times article dated August 8th, 2002. Everyone knew Jason Eric Wilson was a boy with troubles and a troubled mind. His depression and anxiety, which first emerged in 7th grade, grew worse last year as his family moved from one relative to the next after eviction from their Brooklyn home. Within the past 10 months, he was hospitalized twice for mental illness. But in the last two weeks, Jason's troubles were compounded as his family turned to the city for shelter. With his father and his 10-year-old sister Lonnie, Jason bounced from, between temporary shelter rooms and the crammed Emergency Assistance Unit, or the EAU, in the Bronx where he had slept on the floor through the night. On Monday, Jason, age 16, killed himself, swallowing every pill he could find in his family's Harlem Shelter Room, including his own medication. There is no way to know why any teenager takes his own life and Jason's history and troubled background alone were combustible mix. But to Jason's father, Eric Wilson, there was little doubt what drove his son to kill himself. My son committed suicide because he was, because we were being threatened with being sent back to the EAU. He said weeping as he recalled his son's reaction to returning to the EAU, the city's office where homeless families apply for hope, for shelter and where families often end up spending the night. In a letter dated only six days before, warned that Jason's emotional health was deteriorating because of environmental instability, including threats of homelessness and poverty. I'm sharing this story with you because just one year prior to this article, my family and I went through that same process. And let me tell you, this article barely scratches the surface of what our homeless experience was like. My heart goes out to him whenever I read this article because I know exactly how he felt. The hopelessness, the embarrassment and the anger of even having to go through that. This is what's at risk, our mental and emotional well-being as tenants in New York and all over this country. The threat, the actual experience of homelessness and the long-term effects of instability and poverty. Though this is dated 16 years ago and that EAU no longer exists, very little has changed with how homelessness affects teens and young adults. To say that a landlord's hardship of not getting a few extra dollars from tenants with all the grants and resources available to them, with the other ways that they make up for that loss, like charging money for keys or MCIs or IAIs or renting out for Airbnb and so on, to, is the equivalent of...
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, your time's running out.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna finish. You've got one more person, I'm almost done, I promise. Is the equivalent to a family struggling to make ends meet that have to decide between food over rent is just offensive. A vote for a rent freeze or the lowest possible increase is a vote in the right direction to save what little affordable housing we have left. Choose wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco de la Cruz. Good evening, thank you for coming.
Me he venido, en realidad, porque tantas injusticias...
We, we need to have you speak closer to the microphone, please.
Okay, excuso. Digo que he estado, vine hasta aquí porque mirando tantas injusticias que a diario se cometen con nosotros, los tenas y cada familia que estamos representado aquí. Nosotros le hemos dado un voto de confianza a ustedes y se lo seguimos dando porque creemos que ustedes pueden ser las personas que pueden equilibrar a estos lando abusadores que cada día están cometiendo abuso contra nosotros.
So, I am here because I see a lot of the injustices that happens to, that happens daily to tenants and all of the other families, families here present. We have given you our vote, um, and because...
De lando, abusadores.
And then the abusive landlords.
Que pueden ayudarnos, que ellos son los que pueden equilibrar para que esos lando no sigan abusando de nosotros.
And you have the power because you can equilib, um, help, um, you can help balance what's happening here with the landlords so they can stop abusing us.
Nosotros llegamos a este país que somos todo inmigrante con la realidad de que siempre se ha dicho que este es un país de oportunidades, pero estamos mirando que cada día más esas oportunidades se nos están poniendo más chiquitas y la pura realidad de ese ataúd fue, pero es la pura realidad que nos representa todo lo que estamos y por eso estamos insistiendo...
Excuse me, let's stop and get the interpretation, please.
Uh, we came to this country, we are all immigrants and...
País de oportunidades.
And this is a country of opportunities, but each time, each day, we come to see that those opportunities are less and less.
Entonces, le pedimos a ustedes que nos representan a todos nosotros, los ciudadanos americanos y inmigrantes también, que son residentes, que nos den esa fuerza de su corazón y nos defiendan contra esos lando abusadores que están haciendo más chiquito la producción económica de nosotros para pagar esa renta.
And we ask you, and we ask you to represent us and to give us the strength so that you can help us fight against these landlords.
Eh, voy a decir algo que para mí es vergonzoso. Quiero que me den la oportunidad.
I wanna, I wanna say something that for me it's a little shameful to, to share, but I want you to give me the opportunity.
El año pasado, mi hijo, Jesús de la Cruz, tuvo que suspender su estudio en la universidad porque yo no podía darle a él ni siquiera para el pasaje para su universidad y dejó y está sentado en mi casa esperando una nueva oportunidad de trabajo para él ir al de nuevo estudiar porque lo que a mí me dan como compensación...
Okay, momento, let's get the interpretation.
Last year, my son had to stop his studies because I couldn't give him money so that he could go to school and so then he had to wait at home until I was able to provide for him again.
Así que le pido a ustedes que consagren su mente, su corazón y lo pongan en esta, cada una de estas informaciones que ustedes están recabando para tomar una decisión a favor de nosotros que lo necesitamos y le damos las gracias por haberlo escuchado.
I ask you that you look into your hearts and to make, to make a decision in favor of us and we thank you for having heard us today.
Thank you. Mr. de la Cruz is our last speaker for this evening. Before everyone leaves, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to come out and share your concerns and your perspective on what we have to do as the Rent Guidelines Board. And thank you for staying as late as you did and for taking the time to come and testify before us. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I move.
At second, we adjourn, thank you very much.